Our virtual public hearing. For the record, today is Monday, July 20th, 2020. The purpose of this public hearing is to solicit citizen input regarding a potential lease option and solar easement for our landfill property. And before I open the public hearing portion, do John want to read the public notice for us?
Yes. Notice is hereby given that the Board of Councilmen of the City of Torrington will conduct a public hearing on Monday, July 20th, 2020, starting at 6:30 PM to solicit citizen input regarding a potential lease option and solar easement for the landfill property. Pursuant to the Governor's Executive Order Number 7B, there is no physical location for this meeting. Members of the public are encouraged to submit their comments in writing to the City Clerk's office before 4 o'clock PM on Monday, July 20th. Written comments that are sent electronically to city underscore clerk@torringtonct.org or by mail to the City Clerk's Office, 140 Main Street, Torrington, Connecticut, will be forwarded to the Board of Councilmen for their review and read aloud at the start of the public hearing. Public participation is encouraged via phone or online. Instructions are available at www.torringtonct.org/zoom. By phone, and listed the call and phone number, meeting ID, and also information for getting in online. All interested parties are invited to participate and submit their comments dated at Torrington, Connecticut, this 15th day of July, 2020. Carol Anderson, City Clerk.
Thank you. All right. Before we jump into any public comments, I wanted to give U.S. Solar an opportunity to expand on the presentation that they gave to the City Council on July, no, June 20th. July? I don't know. Wherever we were. So we have, representing U.S. Solar today, Peter Schmidt, and I think he has a PowerPoint presentation that he's prepared to share. So you're on, Peter.
Perfect. I'm going to share my screen real quick, just to give a little bit of a background about the company before I dive into any citizen comments. So I reorganized the slides from what the council is seeing, just because I wanted to make sure to talk about the background of our company and then get into kind of the lease itself. So this should just take maybe five or 10 minutes, and then I'm happy to answer any questions that anyone has. We're really excited about working with the City of Torrington on this lease, and I want to make sure that we're as transparent as possible. So just a little bit about who we are first, I wanted to start. This is a picture of our Renshall site in, just outside of Duluth, Minnesota. At least at the time this was constructed, this was the northernmost community solar array in the continental U.S., which is pretty cool for us. I'm based out of our Minneapolis office, so there's a lot of content around Minnesota, and I'll get into that reason. But this is kind of an example of what a ground mound solar site looks like that we designed, though this one isn't quite in full bloom with the pollinator piece, and I'll get into that a little bit as well. So a little bit about U.S. Solar. We've been around since 2014. The reason for that particular date is that our CEO and COO both had been working in solar for quite a, quite a bit of time at that point. So our CEO is based in Fairfield, Connecticut, and he had been working at Morgan Stanley at their solar trading desk. So he has kind of the finance side of our, our operation, allows us to kind of punch above, you know, a relatively newer company's weight class, because he had a very deep network of folks from his time there. And then our COO, Reed Richardson, at the time, in early 2000s, was out in California. That's majority where the market was at the time for solar. And in 2014, there was a piece of legislation that passed in Minnesota, which is very similar to what we're looking at in Connecticut, called the Community Solar Gardens Act. And Reed is from Minnesota, so it allowed us to have an opportunity to come back, found the company, and do really well in the Minnesota market, while also at the same time bidding in the, just kind of blossoming Connecticut market for community solar. Now, Connecticut's had, of course, a much longer history of solar than just community solar, but this is something we focused on as part of our mission, because we like the aspect of connecting our solar arrays to more than a single customer, but to a broader set of community, community customers. So we'll talk about that. We now have, over the years, grown quite a bit. We're up to 30 full-time employees, and we have three main offices, one in Fairfield, right a little ways away from where you all are. Minneapolis, Minnesota, which is where I am, we're located in downtown. And then we also have our CFO sits in Arlington, Virginia, and we have a couple of satellite offices from there. But those are kind of the big three spots where we're located. This is a small, privately held company, so there's no, you know, big equity investors or anything like that. This is, the initial founders are the ones that put in the money, and we've grown it responsibly since, which has allowed us to be very successful. And just one note of our accomplishments over the years is that we've developed and originated 125 megawatts of these projects. Just as a quick reference point, one megawatt of power is right around enough for between 200 and 225 homes. So this is quite a bit of power, but this isn't the utility scale operations that are thousands and thousands of acres. These are largely projects that are anywhere between 10 and 50 acres in size. So not rooftop, but also not, not some of the huge, huge projects you've maybe seen in the news. A little bit more about our key accomplishments. The way that we grew pretty responsibly is that our initial portfolio was developed as part of a joint venture with the, with a bank in Canada. And we ended up getting bought out of that joint ventureship and used that money to then be able to self-finance the rest of our projects since. So it's been a very good way of not taking on a lot of debt, not having to give away a lot of equity, been a very responsible growth pattern. And since then, we've closed some other tax equity financing operations with New Energy Capital in 2017, which has allowed us to take advantage of tax equity finance, which is a pretty important part of solar, solar development. And since then, we've also solicited quite a few customers. So for community solar, as I mentioned, we have both the, the site lease, which is kind of what we're talking about tonight, where we use parcels of land and we put in the actual panels. But for community solar, we also have this second transaction where we work with, whether it's homeowners, whether it's businesses, municipalities, school districts, who may not have either the capital or the, or the building to put solar on their own facility. This allows them to benefit from a solar garden that is built elsewhere. So we've also had to, had to develop that kind of that customer pipeline for folks who are benefiting in that sense. So we work with, you know, really small towns, as small as a couple hundred people, all the way up to the city of Minneapolis is one of our customers, for example. The University of Minnesota is one of our customers, and even the Minnesota Twins, for baseball fans out there. Hopefully, that's not, not a negative thing for any baseball fans in the room. At least, I didn't say Yankees, right? So again, just to kind of get to our, our leadership team, Marty Mobley is our CEO. He sits in Fairfield. Reed Richardson is my direct boss. He's with me here in Minneapolis. Brian Launce sits in Arlington, Virginia. And then Bruce Bedwell is our General Counsel, and Rob Odine is our Executive Vice President. And this is kind of their background. So though we are a relatively new company, there is a really deep amount of knowledge in the company in various parts of solar, whether it's finance, or development, or construction, which really allows us to be successful as we've, as we've grown over the years. And then one quick slide, again, I like to, to point out the official partner of U.S. Solar is the Minnesota Twins. If and when we can ever see baseball again, if you watch a Twins game in Minnesota and you look into left center field behind the bullpen, you'll see a big U.S. Solar sign. Target Field, which is the home of the Minnesota Twins, actually does a lot of really cool environmental initiatives in terms of reusing gray water, producing some of their own energy, and then also subscribing to community solar as a way of offsetting all of their energy use and trying to get closer to that kind of 100% renewable component. So we're seeing that more and more with a lot of different sports franchises, that they're seeing both the PR benefit and the economic benefit and the environmental benefit from this kind of transaction. That's a little bit about us, and I'm happy to answer more questions about that after this, but I want to talk a little bit about why, why I'm here tonight and why I've been talking to Torrington about, about your landfill site. And the reason, this is, this is actually one of my favorite sites, by the way. This is a really cool spot in Big Lake, Minnesota, just outside of the Twin Cities. This was our first site that we purchased. So we do some leases and some purchase options. And this site, at the time of this picture, had just been planted, so you can see a lot of, a lot of what's in the background is corn and soy, because we're in the Midwest, and pretty much the only thing we grow is corn and soy. But this is a site that we've kind of turned into a destination site, where there's trees all the way around to scream. There is a pollinator-friendly planting mix underneath. This is the first season, so it's still kind of establishing its roots. And then right across the street from this site is a development, a solar development from a different company who doesn't do any of those things, and it's a pretty stark contrast in what these sites are going to end up looking at. Again, this, this picture was taken in late 2018, so the site actually looks quite a bit different now, but we're starting to get more of our drone footage year over year. The advantage of working with us in a solar lease is, there's, I'd say two or threefold, but actually we're sitting more on the five or sixfold. We've done a lot of community solar work, which is what we're looking to do in Connecticut. Connecticut, the vernacular is a little bit different. Instead of calling it community solar, it's called the Shared Clean Energy Facility Program, but that, that concept is still the same, where you're having customers who are benefiting from an array that is built elsewhere. It's kind of that community input. And calling it a garden allowed us to differentiate ourselves from, you know, a big coal plant or a big natural gas plant. It has kind of a different, different feel to it. So we have a lot of experience. We've, we've successfully brought more than 44 of these projects online, largely in Minnesota. But again, to our Connecticut experience, we're actually in the process of moving towards, towards construction on another landfill site in Sheldon, Connecticut, which has been a really good learning experience, which we can take and apply to Torrington, because working with the DEP is, is no small task in its own right, as I know, I'm sure some of the regulators on the phone might, might recognize. So having that, that relationship already built, having that, that network, and having the experience of knowing which hoops we have to jump through with which people, is a really important aspect when selecting a developer, particularly in Connecticut, which has a little bit different program rules than, than some others. And part of that, again, is also knowing this program. So the Shared Clean Energy Facility Program that we are trying to apply to had a pilot program back, starting in 2016, it finally got selected in 2018. They'd only selected three, three developers, and we were one of the three. So we were seen as a very trustworthy developer that is bringing our project to fruition. Now, with any pilot program, you have different stumbling blocks, because you have to work with utilities to create new processes, you have to work with the state to create new processes. So there's certainly been some growing things there, but again, having that program knowledge is really helpful when trying to get the next iteration of projects moving faster and smoother through the program. And then on the landfill side of things, so the landfill development is, you know, quite a bit different than if you're using a farm field or a rooftop. We've been working with some local groups like TRC and CTEC in Connecticut to be able to take, to pull on their experience as well. So TRC manages a lot of landfills for the DEP, because they, the DEP in some instances has taken over management of landfills. I know that is not the case for Torrington, but they have a lot of experience, again, with managing and engineering around landfills and the permitting work on that. And CTEC has also done quite a bit of landfill construction, which is quite useful when working with, with competent partners. And one piece I wanted to highlight here, this very last bullet, which is, I think, what, what got my conversation going with Ray Drew from Public Works in the first place, is that my understanding is that there have been developers that have approached Torrington in the past, and really what they were pitching was, you know, getting Torrington to sign an energy contract, and having the solar array in the landfill as kind of a side component to that energy contract. And that is not what we're asking. We are asking purely for a, a long-term lease, where we would be paying the city, and in exchange, we would be taking a maintenance component out of the city's plate. So the transaction's a lot easier, it's a lot less cumbersome in terms of having to manage maintenance teams or developments for the city. And there is still a benefit component if they wanted to sign up for community solar, but it's not, it's not, it's not an obligation. My understanding is that the city has done a very good job with its energy consultants in negotiating a really good price for its energy. So having that, that energy purchase component is probably not in the, the near-term interest of, east of the city, so this simplifies that transaction quite a bit. As the slides keep going, there's, there's still some, still some more benefits for us. One piece that I like to, to talk about as well is that, as part of our business model, as part of the sustainable business model, is that we are the long-term owner and operator of our projects. And this might not sound like a big deal, but particularly in energy development, what often happens is a developer will bring a project to just short of construction, or just after permitting, and then sell it to someone else, which makes it really confusing or cumbersome for a landowner, because they might have to call a different person every couple of years as the project changes hands over and over and over. And a secondary problem with that model is often that the initial developer isn't really incentivized to build a particularly high-quality project, because it's not going to be in their hands very long. Our model is that we own and operate our projects long-term. So we, again, we use that first JV kind of to fund everything else, but since then, everything is owned and operated, and that's our, our business model long-term, because it does incentivize us to build a much higher-quality project, because we don't want to have to deal with any issues down the road either, because we're, we're doing that maintenance. And really, from the city's side, what that, that means is that you can call me as a, as a point person kind of throughout the life of this contract. So that makes things a lot easier. On the decommissioning side, again, as a long-term owner and operator, we're also obliged to restore the site when it's done. And that both, that both involves taking the equipment off the site, which in this case is a lot of, you know, cement, ballast block, racking, modules, wiring, but also restoring the land underneath. In this case, there's actually quite a bit of benefit, because we're planning on working with groups like Fresh Energy to try to plant pollinator-friendly habitat underneath this, this site, which should actually be improving the soil underneath the array. We do have to work through some hoops with the DEP, because technically that isn't part of their standard operating procedures, because pollinator-friendly solar didn't exist when those standard operating procedures were written. But we have a lot of strong national allies from the National Renewable Energy Lab, the Argon Laboratory, and Fresh Energy, who are really invested in, in working with us to, to bring more pollinator-friendly projects to the state, which allows you to have both the renewable energy benefit of solar, while also supporting monarch and bee populations, which is something that we're really proud of. So that's, this is a, a lot of the, I know I'm, I'm chewing my own horn, as I should be, but I don't want to overwhelm too much. So that's kind of a little bit about why you should, why you should be signing up with us. And then kind of the, the general terms are on, on the slide, it's up on the screen now. So we're offering right now $2,000 acres, or $2,000 per acre, and what we're looking at is right around 15 acres of land, looking at about $30,000 per year in rent, in rent payments. And this is also designed with some wiggle room in mind. I know in talking to the mayor, there's a desire in the future to create walking paths around the landfill, or you're using it as some kind of recreational space. And this is using land that isn't steeper than 15, 15 degrees, or 15% grade, rather, because you want to avoid any, any soil disturbance. And past 15, past a 15% grade, you have to do a lot more stabilization measures, and with a landfill, you're really wanting to be a lot more careful with that cap. So we're keeping everything above that 15% grade to make sure that everything is stable and safe with the landfill moving forward. In addition to that, we've, we've talked about, there's also a tax payment built in here, which, which, there are a couple of components, of course, with both property, underlying real property tax, and then also personal property tax. So that's built in here. And then also, one piece, I know right now the city is managing its own vegetation. We would take this over as part of our lease, but if there was extra, if there was interest from the city's side, we would also be open to negotiating a vegetation management contract. So the city would also be directly involved in that, if they, if they so wanted to. If not, we have been working with Ernst Pollinator Services on the East Coast, who specifically does this kind of work. And again, the pollinator benefits around here, which is something that I'm happy to talk ad nauseam about, if you want. This has been one of my big pushes internally, to make sure we're getting a stack environmental benefit. So that's why you should, why you should sign up with, with U.S. Solar. And I want to talk a little bit more about this program that we're trying to apply to, because it's had some, some special, I don't want to call them hiccups, but we've had some, some last-minute hurdles that we've been working with over the last week, which I've been really excited to work with, with Mayor Carbon on, as she's been a really helpful ally as we've, as we've sorted out these issues. So the Shared Clean Energy Facilities Program, as I mentioned, very similar to community solar, allows the subscribers of anyone in the service territory, EverSource's service territory, to, to benefit from this. And it's going to provide essentially a one and a half cent per kilowatt hour reduction to your, to your energy bill. So that's great. You receive it directly on your EverSource bill. It's a single, it's a single transaction, you're not, you're not paying anyone else. It's pretty slick in Connecticut. This is quite different than in other markets, where it's built in directly onto your EverSource bill. In Minnesota, for example, we actually have a separate transaction. You have one transaction with your utility and one with your, with the solar developer. So this is quite a bit cleaner for, for Connecticut residents, and actually, I would applaud PERA for that approach. It, it really makes it a lot more straightforward. Now, you know, EverSource and UI maybe are less happy about having to do that extra work, but this is something that's helping Connecticut get to a lot of their renewable energy goals. So I actually think this is a pretty cool project, or program design. As someone who watches a lot of program design discussions around the country, I think this is a pretty unique element. Now, these programs, or this, these projects are solicited once per year, very similar to, if anyone's heard of the ZREC or the LREC program, which is another style of solar development. This normally happens in April or May. This year, there was an extension due to, due to COVID-19, as there were delays with pretty much everything related to COVID-19 at this point. And so the, the solicitation window was originally going to close last Monday, on the 13th, but we actually petitioned PERA for a two-week extension to that timeline, because there were similar COVID delays in, in terms of my negotiations with, with the City of Torrington, and we were granted that extension, which we finalized today. So we have one more week after this week to, to get our projects, to have this lease negotiated and signed, if possible, if we want to participate in this year's program. Now, again, this is an annual solicitation, so there are six years of this program. If we missed it this year, we could certainly negotiate until next year, but in order to get a project as soon as we can onto the landfill, which I know is desired from the city's side, we're trying to hit this, this timeline before next Monday. So there's also, again, this, this program is open to any project that is built on a, on a rooftop, in a farm field, or on a landfill or brownfield site. There is encouragement coming from the state to have brownfield landfill sites, or landfill sites, because those are sites that are very difficult to develop with anything else. And there are certain extra requirements for that, right? So for a project the size we're talking about, we'd have to go permit through the Connecticut Siting Council. That does allow still a public hearing, again, with the City of Torrington. You would still have a, a chance as residents in the city to, to speak about this project as we're going through its development process. The, the Siting Council can take anywhere between six and 12 months, as you've seen with the other projects across town, or across the city, sorry, colloquialism. And in, in addition to that, for landfills, we also have to work with the DEP to alter the existing, the, the usage permit and the disturbance permit. So there is a process with the DEP that goes through several aspects of its energy and environment divisions, to make sure everything's done safe and above board. And again, luckily for us, we've gone through a lot of that process with our Sheldon projects, so we have the experience and know kind of how that has to happen. So, you know, I know, I've thrown a lot of information at you, so I'm going to wrap up with just how we would move forward and what the, the purpose of me being at this public hearing and at the subsequent City Council meeting is. I'm, I'm trying to get this lease signed tonight, as I mentioned, or tomorrow, rather, authorize the mayor to sign, to sign a lease with me, you know, tomorrow, this week. And as this is mentioned on the second bullet on the page, this is kind of outlining that, that extension. So we have most of our, our application elements ready to submit to both EverSource and the DEP. One of the last elements is formal site control, which would be in the form of this optional lease, which is being discussed tonight. But again, this is, just as a reminder, this is not an energy purchase obligation for, for the city or for any citizen. On its base level, this is, this is really just a 20-year lease to put an environmentally friendly project on top of a landfill that is currently growing grass. And I'm not saying it's a bad use of the landfill currently, but if you can do essentially the same thing with a more diverse vegetation and provide renewable energy for the surrounding community, I think that is a much better use of the, of the site, and I think the city would agree. So we're, we're excited about this. We do all the permitting, everything else. The city, what the city's obligation in this transaction would be is that we would occasionally need a signature from you as a landowner, and everything else would happen on our side, and then as the project gets built, we start paying rent. So, you know, I'm happy to talk more about that, but that's kind of the, the basis of the whole thing, is I know I gave you some information about the program, some information about us, and some information about the lease, but really, when it comes down to it, at the end of the day, what we're looking for is a 20-year lease signature to, to be able to produce clean energy on the site. And with that, I'll, I'll wrap up my piece, and I'm happy to answer any questions, either from the council or from the public. I know those might happen at different times, since the public hearing is before the City Council meeting, but I'm happy to chat as much as you want about solar. And I will, I will cede control of, of the, of the screen share with that. Mayor, I think you're still on mute.
Sorry about that. Didn't hit it hard enough, I guess. Just for clarification, on one of the PowerPoint slides where you're talking about the lease payment for, and this is during the commercial operation period, I think your slide indicated that the, the rental would be $2,000 per acre, but the lease agreement that we've been working on for the last few weeks actually indicated that was $2,500 per acre. It was...
That is a big difference. Let me pull it up.
Yeah.
My apologies.
No, that's fine. Only because I know that the council has received the copy of the term sheet and...
You're right. This might be an outdated draft. You're correct, it is $2,500 per acre. My apologies.
No, don't apologize. I, I know that we, this has been ongoing negotiations and trying to keep up with all the redlining and the phone calls and the updates, so greatly appreciate that. So I'm going to, I don't know, Ray, did you want to add anything to Peter's presentation?
Well, I think Peter covered, you know, you know, everything we, we talked about in our last meeting in regards to the term sheet and the lease. You know, it's option period, 20 years, plus the 20 years, the operational period. So, you know, just to kind of bring people up to speed a little bit, as many people are aware, we have been trying to develop a project at the landfill for a number of years. As many of you are aware, Jerry Lele had tried on several occasions, and we, we want to continue that. We, we think that development of a solar array at the landfill is an exceptional use of that facility. As Peter indicated, we do have maintenance costs associated with that, you know, year over year. So if we could kind of turn the landfill into a revenue generator versus a cost, a cost center, then, you know, we are really looking to, to do that.
Great. Thank you. So because this is a virtual public hearing, I, I, I'm going to turn this back over to Carol and/or John. Do you, did either of you, or do you have any public comments that have been submitted in accordance with the legal notice?
I did not receive any public comments electronically.
Okay. Well, then, if that is the case, I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing portion of this, this evening's agenda, because there'll be an opportunity for the council to ask questions in the regular council meeting. So at this point, I guess I don't, I probably should have just used the same protocol I always use closing public hearings. If there are no public comments, no public comments, no public comments, then I'm going to declare this public hearing closed. And for the record, it is 6:57 PM. With that said, I'm going to move right into the opening of the regular City Council and WPCA meeting. It is still Monday, July 20th, and it is 6:57 PM. And item number one on the agenda would be a roll call vote for the City Council, and I would to solicit that roll call vote, entertain a motion to authorize the mayor to enter into a lease option, lease and solar easement with U.S. Solar Corporation for the landfill property. Do I have a motion?
I'll move it, or what?
Thank you, Councilwoman Ruette.
Waldron, second.
Thank you. I have a motion, second. And the floor is open for questions. I have both Peter and Ray on the line, and I also have Victor Michelle, who's been working with us on the, the legal, the legalese of the contracts. So questions from the council? I guess there are none. And this being a roll call vote, I'm going to move right into the, into the vote. Councilwoman Wagner.
And yes.
Councilman Oliver.
Yes.
Councilwoman Ruette.
Yes.
Councilman Rubino.
Yes.
And Councilman Waldron.
Yes.
And I don't see that Councilman Cavanero is on the line, unless he's one of those phone numbers. Is Councilman Cavanero on the line? He is not. So that is five of five voting. This motion passes, and just to wrap up, I will have another phone call with Peter Schmidt tomorrow morning. Ray Drew and Vic will be joining us, just so we can finalize this and, and get you moving forward. So, thank you.
Perfect. Looking forward to it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right. I'm going to move right into item number two on our agenda. I will entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the public hearing held July 6, 2020.
Waldron, move to.
Thank you.
Wagner, second.
Thank you. I have a motion. I have a second. Are there questions on the minutes? Are there questions on the minutes? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries. Oh, yeah, that was a "aye," not a "nay," okay. Item three, I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the regular meeting held July 6, 2020.
Waldron, move three.
Thank you.
Second, Wagner.
Thank you. I have a motion and a second. Are there questions or comments on these minutes? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion. Oh, I'm sorry, I have one abstention. And that's for the record is Councilman Oliver. Item four, I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the special meeting held July 16, 2020.
Waldron, move four.
Thank you, Councilman Waldron.
Second.
Rubino, second.
I heard Councilman Rubino. Questions or comments on the minutes? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. Item five, I'll entertain a motion to approve the reappointment of Tim Waldron to the Torrington area health district for a three-year term expiring January 9, 2023.
Ruette, I'll move it.
Thank you, Councilwoman Ruette.
Wagner, second.
And seconded by Councilwoman Wagner. Are there questions on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item six, I'll entertain a motion to approve the mayor's appointment of Gordon Leidy and Rachel McGruder to fill existing vacancies on the cultural affairs committee for four-year terms expiring December 31, 2022.
Move six, Waldron.
Thank you, Councilman Waldron.
Second, Wagner.
Thank you, Councilwoman Wagner. Are there questions on this motion? Seeing, hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any... Motion carries. Item seven, voting, I'll entertain a motion by the council, acting herein as the Water Pollution Control Authority, to approve the payment of $2,500 from Fund 490, a sanitary sewer capital improvement, to Weston and Sampson for invoice 7200017 for engineering services pertaining to the Homestead Road project.
Move seven, Waldron.
Thank you, Councilman Waldron.
Second, Ruette.
And seconded by Councilwoman Ruette. Are there questions on this motion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. Item eight, I'll entertain a motion to approve the Public Works Director's request to weigh the city's bid process and accept the state, regional, and national bids for public work projects and materials for the fiscal year 2021, based on the contracts included in Mr. Drew's memo dated July 15, 2020.
I'll move Wagner.
Thank you. I heard Commissioner, Councilwoman Wagner, and a seconded by Councilman Oliver. Are there questions on this motion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
One abstention.
An abstention from Councilman Rubino. Thank you. All right. Moving on to item number nine, infrastructure improvements and project status report. I'm going to turn this over to Ray Drew. It doesn't require, and it's just a report to the council. So, Mr. Drew, you're on.
Good evening, council. This, what we wanted to do is, you know, when I took over, we wanted to periodically give the council and the boards an update of the various public works, infrastructure projects. This was supposed to be installment number four. Unfortunately, it's installment number three. We didn't do, due to the situation, we did miss the March installment. I believe that the Public Works Department heads are online should you have any questions in regards to the projects and the status of the projects that we were working on. So, I don't want to belabor, it's a very lengthy document, and I'm not going to go through, you know, each and every project. Just that they are available, and I am available should you have any questions in regards to what is being presented to you tonight.
All right. So, I'm trying to pull up the report. Are there questions from the council members for the, Ray? I think I saw Paul Cousins, our engineer, is also on the line. Do you have questions or comments on the report?
That's very lengthy, this is Rubino, and very informative. I'm still reading paperwork this weekend.
Would you like me to make it shorter next time?
Along with the other agenda, sure.
Yeah, okay. I will strive to do that.
But, thank you, Ray.
You know what I like about these reports, if I may, is it does give you, it sort of walks you through, as we know, public works projects, you know, they usually take a little bit of time. It's not weeks, it's usually months, and in some cases, it's years, like the solar project we just approved. So, I do like these reports given on this kind of a timeline because it helps us see the progress that we're making. It's very easy to lose sight of those, but it also provides us some pretty quick, easy reference material when we're out in public and public have questions. So, last call, if there are any questions for Mr. Drew. Councilwoman Wagner, you are muted.
Of course I was. Sorry about that. I just want to thank Paul Cousins and Ray Drew for the weekly reports on construction. You know, that's one of the questions I'm asked frequently. It's usually worded, it's how come there's nothing going on? And I think it's probably because people traveling to areas where the work is taking place. And I know I've seen some... And also explaining the difference between city and state roads. So, I really appreciate them sending us that report. Thank you.
No, well said. Thank you for saying it.
Well, I would interject then, if anybody asks you, how come nothing's going on? We are in the process of probably close to $100 million worth of projects that are ongoing or coming to completion or getting ready to start. So, I think there's a lot going on.
Tremendous amount.
I think if you ask Deputy Director, Mr. Cousins, that if he had hair to pull out, I think he would.
I just wanted to make it part of the record because I really think you're doing a commendable job, and thank you.
Well, we do absolutely appreciate yours and the council's support and understanding of the very valuable and important work that Department of Public Works is doing.
All right. If there are no other questions, then I'm going to go ahead and move into the next agenda item. Item 10 on the agenda, I will entertain a motion to approve the transfers described in the city comptroller's memo dated June 30, 2020, to close out small inactive accounts pending authorization from the Board of Finance.
Move ten, Waldron.
Thank you, councilwoman.
Rubino, second.
And seconded by Councilman Rubino. I know that Alice is on the phone. She's one of those phone numbers I see here. So, if you have questions that haven't been provided in the memo... No questions, I'll call the motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
All right. Motion carries. Item 11 is another motion to approve the fiscal year 19, 2019, 2020, transfers and budget amendments described in the city comptroller's memo dated June 30, 2020. And again, this would be pending Board of Finance approval.
Ruette, I'll move it.
Thank you, Councilwoman Ruette.
Second, Wagner.
And seconded by Councilwoman Wagner. Are there questions on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right. So, item 12 on our agenda, I'll entertain a motion to approve the fiscal year 2020, 2021, transfers and budget amendment described in the city comptroller's memo dated July 16, 2020, pending authorization from the Board of Finance.
So, move Waldron.
Thank you.
Second, Wagner.
All right. So, a motion by Councilman Waldron, a seconded by Councilwoman Wagner. Are there questions? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right. Then, we're now moving into, trying to pull this up on my screen as I read the motion. Item 13, I'll entertain a motion to accept the 2020, 2021 vehicle replacement plan as presented.
Mrs. Ruette, I will move it.
Thank you.
Second, Waldron.
Does everybody have their glasses?
I know. So... So, I have a motion, I have a second. And since Councilwoman Ruette stepped into that, I don't know. Did you want to make any comments, Councilwoman?
Well, I think this, you know, needed to have some revisions. Actually, it's not on the agenda, but I know we're also looking at a policy that was developed in 2003, am I correct, Mayor? That really looks at, you know, vehicle replacement and really what the processes are, which I know Representative Rubino will be happy that the Vehicle Replacement Committee has looked at. But Emile is there. If Emile wanted to summarize it probably much better than myself. I have it up on my screen, but I would defer to Emile.
Yeah. Before I defer that, I think there is one change to the plan as it's been presented. In the Vehicle Replacement Advisory Board meeting last week, there was one change that was made before it was recommended to the city council. And you'll see on the... Where it shows a vehicle under planning and zoning for $28,000, that vehicle was recommended to be moved out a year. So, the plan that you have before you would actually be, instead of the $389,000, we would be reducing it by $28,000, which is $361,000. And I apologize, I didn't pick this up before I called for the motion. So, I don't know what...
Mayor, we're just voting on the actual plan, correct? Or whatever?
Yeah. And this is, and this is a change to that plan. The, yes. The one change that came out of vehicle replacement was that that one planning and zoning vehicle moved out one year. In the Vehicle Replacement Advisory Board, they talked about the engineering vehicle. They talked about the crime van in the police department. And then, before recommending or approving this, the Vehicle Replacement Advisory Board did vote to remove that planning and zoning vehicle for one year. So, the motion was, as I recall, made by Councilman Waldron and Wagner. Do you want to amend your motion to reflect the...
Actually, I made the motion.
Oh, was it? I'm sorry, Councilwoman Ruette?
Yes, I'll amend it for that revision.
Okay. And the second, is that meant? Thank you. Thank you. So, the plan that you are approving or accepting this evening is for $361,000, reflecting that $28,000 item being moved out. And as Councilwoman Ruette noted, Emile is on the line. Emile, was there, I know it's hard because he's usually watching his computer. It's not, he doesn't have any... And microphone. So, I don't know, Emile, if you're able to unmute yourself, I think you're one of those phone calls or those phone numbers I'm looking at. And I don't have my phone tonight, so I can't bail you out on this one. So, I'm going to, all right.
I'm going to go ahead then, unless there are questions for Councilwoman Ruette or myself, or Ray, who was also in that meeting.
Well, since Rubino's in question, I'm going to ask a question. The established budget that we utilize per year, so in other words, it keeps a fund together, right? There is balances. In other words, we're spending $389,000, but there's a unpaid balance in this account that gets formulated every year. And how much do we put in per year?
So, what was recommended of the Vehicle Replacement Advisory Board is a contribution to this fund in the total amount of $400,000. That $400,000 will be presented to the council in the form of a budget, budget, I don't want to say amendments, the budget reductions and adjustments that we had to make after the mill rate was set.
Okay. I mean, just looking at the out schedule, it's about $1 million per year for the vehicle replacement. So, just, you know, think about next year, you're looking at 1.4. I thought it was just, I thought that the whole idea of the vehicle replacement accounts is to keep a steady flow going towards that account and utilizing that money's available.
Yes. So, when it comes to determining, and Alice is on the line, and she can probably help explain this better than I can, but when we look at this spending plan, I mean, obviously, the first thing that we're looking at is, you know, what is, what is the balance coming forward from last year's vehicle replacement account? What is in the plan to be acquired in the next fiscal year? And how much will be carried forward in the plan towards next year's purchases? So, I don't know, Alice, if you want to try to sign on and answer this question?
Can you hear me, Mayor?
I can.
Well, the objective of the vehicle replacement plan was to have level funding year over year when it was possible. We, with the tight budgets, we have not been able to fund it at the level that we would have liked to over the last few years. That's why, if you look at the page where there is funding, I gradually increase the funding to get it to a level where we would be able to hopefully sustain for over several years. But it's also a fluid document, the expenditures can change year over year depending on need. So, that's another item that could impact the funding level. But you're absolutely correct. The objective was to hopefully be able to fund it level year over year without a lot of peaks and valleys. So, that's the direction we're hoping to move in.
And just to be sure that everybody, when I sent this to the council last week, it was in the form of an Excel spreadsheet with a number of tabs. And it is the last tab on that Excel spreadsheet that you would find that funding level. And to Councilman Rubino's question, I think this is where you would see the balances after each year's spending, what's left...
Okay.
With some proposed funding levels on line three, and then the estimated year-end balance on line nine. Any other questions on this? All right. If there are no other questions, and before I close this out... All right, if there are no other questions, and before I close this out, I just want to extend my gratitude to Councilwoman Rouette. We have Board of Finance member Chris Bayes. We have Bob Conforti from the Board of Safety. And Glenn Royals from Public, representing the public and our department heads, Emile, Ray, Alice, Penny, working on this Vehicle Replacement Advisory Board. And I just want to, again, express my gratitude before I call the motion, for all of the work that they put into this. And of course, all of that is, you know, based on Emile's keen eye how to, how to keep us on the straight and narrow when it comes to our vehicle inventory. So no other questions? I'll call the motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Item 14 is I would entertain a motion to approve Chief Baldwin's request to purchase a new crime for the Torrington Police Department from MHQ for the total amount of $283,029.50 and authorize the mayor to act on behalf of the city regarding the execution of the contract and its administration. And this, of course, is pending our Board of Finance approval. So I have a motion.
Motion by Wagner.
Thank you.
I think we both jumped in at the same time, so I'm either about
I heard Yeah, I heard Councilwoman Rouette, I heard a second by Councilwoman Wagner. And if there are questions, I know we have Brett Johnson representing the Police Department on the call with us tonight.
Yeah, Mayor, I want to say, I thought the chief actually presented a very good proposal, hopefully answering the questions. As you all know, this agenda was tabled at our last meeting. So hopefully, to my fellow councilmen and women, that the questions were answered and hopefully we'll move forward in supporting this. And, you know, if you can pull it up, I mean, it is a, I think, a vehicle that any way that we can support our police force at this point, particularly in this, this environment. And if it means having the tools they need to do their job better on the scene, I'm hopefully going to garner the support of the council for moving this forward.
I, I agree, and Councilwoman Rouette. And I have seen that there's a need for replacement for their existing crime van for a long time. And I wholeheartedly support this purchase.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments on this purchase? Then I'm going to call the motion. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. All right, we'll move into item number 15 on the agenda. I'll entertain a motion to accept Corporation Council's recommendation and authorize a mayor pursuant to CGS Section 12-179 to release the liens described in Attorney Michelle's memo dated July 20, 2020.
So moved Waldron.
All right, I heard Councilman Oliver. I heard Councilman Waldron. Are there questions on this motion or memo? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item 16, I'll entertain a motion to accept the Building Department's monthly report for June 20.
So moved Wagner.
Thank you.
Second Waldron.
Thank you. So I have a motion and a second. Any questions on the report? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item 17, I'll entertain a motion to consider business by the department.
So moved Waldron.
Second Rubino.
Thank you. I have a motion. I have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
And the opposed? I need to make a list of who I saw on those calls. So I'll start with Mr. Drew. Is there anything else you wanted to add this evening?
I have nothing more tonight, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. I see that Deputy Public Works Director Paul Cousins was on the line. Did you have anything this evening, Paul?
I, I don't, Mayor. Thank you.
Then Alice, was there anything that you wanted to add this evening?
I have nothing. Thank you, Mayor.
And poor Emile. I know he's on that phone, but it's so hard for him to get, get on. But I do see that he is
He has some sign language.
I know, except he has no video. He's just, he's got a
Oh.
Yeah. Um, I think I see Brett Johnson on the phone. I'm hoping he's telling the, the chief about the passage of this agenda item. Carol Anderson, anything this evening?
Carol apologizes. Her, her phone died, so she's, she's out. But nothing from the City Clerk's office.
Thank you, John. And Vic, do you have anything from Corporation Council's office?
Well, thank you, Mayor.
All right, then we'll go right into item 18. I'll entertain a motion to consider business by the mayor and members.
So moved Waldron.
Thank you, Councilwoman Waldron.
Second Wagner.
Thank you, Councilwoman Wagner. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We're open. And I'll start with Councilwoman Wagner. Anything this evening?
Nothing tonight, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Oliver?
Nothing tonight, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilwoman Rouette?
Just maybe we need to apply for a technology grant, you know, so that we can provide the right equipment to our, our directors as they work remotely. I'm not joking or half joking, but it does seem like the trend at this point to be more aware or have more available technology for our, our staff. But I did want to really compliment the city for participating in the event at Copark on Sunday evening with, you know, over 200 people and beautiful evening, you know, really supporting our police force during this very difficult time. So it was a good event. And Mayor, it was great to see you and our state representatives, so.
Thank you. The, all right, so Councilman Rubino, is there anything you want to add this evening?
Nothing, Mayor.
Thank you. And Councilman Waldron?
Oh, yes. I just like to report that I'm doing very well in my recovery here. I start physical therapy tomorrow, so it's amazing that five weeks ago I had this accident. I'll even show you that.
Hey!
Kind of stuff there, you know?
And it didn't fall off.
I feel good. That's right. Didn't fall off. So, but I have to wear this thing for four more weeks or whatever, so.
Please put it back.
I'm good. Thanks.
No, we're glad to see you here, and we are counting our blessings as you are, for sure. So the only thing that I will add, as I'm listening to Councilwoman Rouette talk about technology and, you know, and how these meetings will look going forward. Ray Drew has been working with, with me and our Continuity of Operations Committee in the development of the COOP Plan. That's a Continuity of Operations Plan. And talking about what's our next phase of reopening, you know, are we ready yet to start to hold these meetings as a board back in the auditorium at the dais? And our original goal was to look at this on July 8. And what we recognize is the governor did slow down his reopening plan for very good reasons. I'm not questioning that decision. As we look at what's going on in the rest of the nation, we want to be the state that's doing it right. So I'm not sure when we will get back to those open or those in-person meetings. But for now, because the crowd limitation for indoor small crowd gatherings is held to 25, I think at least for the foreseeable future, we will continue to function by Zoom. And I'll double check with department heads to make sure that they have adequate resources to participate through Zoom. But even beyond our getting back into regular meetings, I do foresee that a hybrid of Zoom and regular meetings, so our department heads may be able to participate remotely. They don't have to stay in the office, you know, until 6:30 or 7 o'clock at night. But also what we know is that our public does appreciate the fact that they can log in without leaving the, sorry, lights are motion detected, without leaving the comfort of their home. So, so more on that to come. But I do believe for the next, at least the very next meeting, we're still by Zoom, unless by some miracle, something else comes up like a vaccine or or all those limitations. So with that, I have nothing further before this board. I do greatly appreciate your seeing your way clear to approving that solar lease. I think we'll fine tune that and get it, get it signed and get you all a copy. And being no further business before the board, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved Waldron.
Thank you. I heard Councilwoman Waldron. I heard all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. We're adjourned. Thank you, Brett.
Good night. Stay safe.